Okay, we're gonna call to order the regular Rochester City Council meeting of November 11th, 2024. Madam Clerk, the roll please.
Bixson?
Here.
Salvia?
Here.
Hauser?
Here.
Jones?
Here.
King? Sage?
Here.
Trent?
Here.
Thank you. Will you please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody, for coming tonight. I just want to make a quick statement. We had the big election this last Tuesday. Hopefully, your candidate won. Don't know who that is. But just, we want to say that in Rochester, we had an 86% turnout. Our election went flawlessly. It was fair and open and efficient. Thank you to all the election workers, all the city workers who participated. Thank you to Leanne and her team, Brian and everyone, for a job well done. So in Rochester, democracy is alive and well and functioning very efficiently. So I think we're all very proud of the way our city comported itself this last Tuesday. So thank you to everybody. I just wanted everybody to know that. Thank you. So all good news. So next, we're on to public comments, scheduled and non-scheduled. We are going to have a civilian award presented by Chief Roehib today. And I just found out I know the person that was part of all the excitement. Welcome, Chief.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. It's a pleasure being here today. And to all our veterans, Happy Veterans Day. This is my first civilian award, and hopefully, there's more. But I am honored to be here today. This is what makes me stay in this business, things like this. And I want to introduce you, Amanda. This is Amanda Drogowski. And this award is for her. I'm just gonna read what's on the plaque, and I'll do a couple more introductions. On October 26, 2024, dispatch received a 911 call regarding a male requiring medical attention at Chomp Deli 200 South Main Street. While dispatcher Simon was speaking with the 9/11 caller, the male collapsed, lost consciousness, and stopped breathing. This critical information was relayed to the responding police officers and firefighters. Sergeant Lyon arrived on scene shortly after Officer Hoag in Rochester Fire Department Engine 2, where he observed Amanda Drogowski performing CPR on the male. She continued chest compressions until Sergeant Lyon attached AED pads to the patient's chest. Following the AED's prompt to continue CPR, Amanda maintained chest compressions until Officer Hoag took over. Amanda then moved to the head of the patient to assist with ventilation using the bag mask until paramedics arrived with oxygen. Sergeant Lyon noted that the man began showing signs of life as a Lucas machine was being positioned. Immediately thereafter, he regained a pulse, started to breathe on his own. The patient was transported to the nearest hospital, where he began to regain consciousness. The next day, Sergeant Lyon followed up with the patient's daughter, who reported that her father was in ICU but was conscious, was able to talk, and he was enjoying the Detroit Lions game. Doctors confirmed that without the immediate lifesaving assistance provided by Amanda Drogowski, the man would not have survived. In recognition of your heroic actions on October 26, 2024, you are hereby commended for your exceptional lifesaving efforts. Signed by me, George T. Roheb Jr., the Chief of Police. A few other things. The man I'm talking about is here today with his family, along with Amanda's family. This is Jerry, Jerry Hall. Jerry, welcome back.
I don't know about forty, but...
No, just, you know, I just think it's amazing when someone can save someone's life. And Amanda happens to be a registered nurse, so thank God she was there. And a big thank you to all our police officers and firefighters that were there. They did a great job, too, and our dispatcher. It's just one thing, Amanda, you gave Jerry a chance at life again. So take advantage of that, Jerry. And also, this just shows a true reflection of who you are as an individual, and it's a compliment to your profession. And I'm very proud of you and your family should be very proud of you. So thank you very much.
So Chief, why don't we get everybody?
Yeah, absolutely.
Come on up and let's get a... Yeah, let's have the officers up and everybody on the council.
Yeah.
Hey, Jerry, can you take the...
We have nothing to do with it.
You have your phone?
But Nancy can go up. She's mayor.
Yeah, I'm gonna steen over here, though, so I'm not in the way.
I'm gonna wheel over here.
Thank you.
The officers.
Get Jerry up here, too?
Yeah, yeah, Jerry.
Jerry!
That excuse isn't gonna work on the tennis court.
No.
Congrats again.
Thank you.
Just Jack.
Thanks a lot. Yes. And he redid the whole thing inside. It looks beautiful. Yes.
Okay. Next, we have the legislative update from our state senator, Mike Weber. Mike, I hope you saved a life before you come up here.
Now, that is a very hard act to follow, but very, very well-deserved recognition. So, yeah, Michael Weber, I served as the state senator for the 9th district, and that includes Rochester, Rochester Hills, Oakland Township, Troy, Sterling Heights, Utica, and Shelby Township. And I came before you in July. I try to do this a couple times a year. And of course, I come from a city council background myself, so try to do updates based on what I think I would want to know if I was in your shoes. You know, since we talked in July, obviously, you know, the budget had passed in June. It went into effect officially on October 1, and that's when our fiscal year starts. So the revenue sharing, we did see, you know, combined a 13.6% increase in revenue sharing. And then, obviously, you know, highlighting the money that we were able to get in the grant for the Rochester Community House. And certainly, we've had some discussion on that. Appreciate it working with Councilwoman Salvia and the whole council, obviously Nick and Alan as well on that. And I think as we head into next fiscal year budget, you know, process into next year, we'll be reaching out again. And I think, you know, as I get a sense of, you know, some of the things that are out there that possibly need funding for the city, you know, it just helps me in terms of trying to put that forward to try to help and make sure that the 9th district gets its fair share of some of these state dollars and that kind of thing. So certainly appreciate the working relationship on that and the continued working relationship on that. In terms of infrastructure funding, we did see a 13, $36.2 million increase in terms of the Public Act $51. We'd like to see roads and bridges prioritized a little bit more in the upcoming budget, and so we'll be working towards that as well. In terms of legislation, so a couple of things that I think will happen, hopefully happen, in our kind of quote-unquote lame duck session. One is dealing with these trust funds. So I've talked a few times about the revenue sharing trust fund. Again, that did pass with very bipartisan support out of the House. It's awaiting action in the Senate. And actually, we're doing like an MML, like, co-chairs call tomorrow morning to kind of, you know, talk about that. At the same token, or at the same time, the, there's a kind of competing trust fund idea that's out there that actually did get into the budget process, dealing with public safety. And so there are the bills before the Senate on that, to try to implement that. So we'll be looking at both of those pieces, hopefully. But again, that just, I think, creates a little more certainty for local units of government, trying to put that money aside versus it being part of that negotiation in the appropriations process every year. So hopefully, we'll have some good news on both of those fronts by the end of the year. The concern, as we dive into the public safety one, of course, everybody supports public safety, but does that trust fund, the way it's set up, kind of skewed towards kind of bigger communities? And what would the city of Rochester get, or the city of Utica, or some of these kind of, you know, smaller population-wise communities? And so trying to kind of work through that and make sure it's equitable for all parties, not just, you know, say Detroit City, Grand Rapids, but all of our communities going forward. And then also wanted to bring up, and I do see some movement, hopefully, on this. You know, you, similar to the city of Troy, obviously, City Rochester has a lot of restaurants in their downtown area and this and that. Since the Supreme Court decision in July, we've had a lot of outreach in terms of keeping the tip credit, which is 38% of the minimum wage. And, you know, a vast majority of the workers that I've talked to do want to keep that current system in place. So there actually was a bill that was introduced in the House last week to do just that. And it was done by Representative Shannon, who's in the majority in the House. So I'm hopeful that will get some traction in the House and hopefully come to the Senate for a vote. To recall what happened with the Supreme Court decision, they did put this in place, but they kind of implemented it between February 21st of 2025, all the way through to February 21st of 2029. And so that would eventually phase out completely the tipped credit. This bill would keep that tip credit in place going forward. So we're hoping to work on that. There's some other pieces to that proposal that I think hopefully we can get some bipartisan agreement on to try to amend and change. And then lastly, for residents here and at home, for more information to sign up for our monthly e-news, please visit SenatorMichaelWeber.com or call our office, 517-373-0994. Thank you.
Any questions? One quick, what was the final tally for the state legislature?
So, yeah, the Senate, the Senate was not up for election. The House, it's either gonna land at 58, 52, or 57, 53 with the Republicans in the majority. There's one seat in Calhoun County that I think they're still doing some vote, voting, looking at the votes and that kind of thing. But it was very close, I think, like 58 votes. So every vote counts.
Every vote counts. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, man. Nice to see you.
Thank you. Thanks.
Okay, next, we have a report from the community garden. See you, guys.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Hello. Good evening, everybody. For those that don't know me, my name is Emily Williams. I am the Special Events Coordinator at Dinosaur Hill Nature Preserve. I also am the steward of our community garden here for the city of Rochester, as well as the Wabash Garden in Rochester Hills jurisdiction. Today, I have created a fun little PowerPoint for us to follow along because I am a visual person. So we will go through some of the statistics of the gardens, as well as plans for the future. Starting off here with a bit of a background here, our Rochester Community Garden, for those that don't know, it is the space that is located behind the Department of Public Works, more colloquially, behind Mr. C's Car Wash. There are a lot of available plots, unfortunately, that didn't get filled in on this PowerPoint here. But we do have about 90 plots available in that garden, with four of those plots being ADA compliant for those that are in wheelchairs or need special accommodations. The cost per plot for both residents and non-residents is $30 per city of Rochester residents, 35 for non-residents, which we do see about a 10% to 15% of our gardeners being non-Rochester City, oh, excuse me, non-Rochester City residents, whether they come from Shelby Township, Utica, some even in Sterling Heights, due to just condo living, apartment living, other things like that. We do see a lot of folks say that the deer just eat their stuff too much in their own yard. So they come to our community garden, which is more than a good enough reason, in my opinion. This year, per interest from our gardeners, we implemented a winter rental fee to give them access to be able to plant fall and winter crops through the end of December 2024 with an additional $5. We did see about 10 gardeners per garden take place in this new program, which we do see growing in the future as well, since a lot of people like their yams and their sweet potatoes. So it was something that those that have participated have really greatly enjoyed that. So with our 2024 results, the total cash brought in from the garden was about $6,000, totaling in at $5,950. We had about 71 individual gardeners, but we fully sold out of the garden, with that number of winter gardeners in the Rochester garden being 11. Now, the 71 gardeners are the families, so they may have more than one plot, with most of our gardeners averaging about three to four plots per family. Now, I have a bachelor's of business administration. I love a SWOT analysis. So we will be going through with the strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats of the garden. Thank you for laughing at my business joke.
We just did our SWOT. Did you know that?
Yes. What kind of wavelength are we on here, people? Let's go. Some strengths of this garden here are the community interest. We fully sold out on both the Rochester and Rochester Hills gardens because our community wants it. This is a resource that they love. This is an activity they love, and it is something that, without it, I feel the community would be lacking, as well as our gardeners feel the community would be lacking. The care for the mission and interest in new opportunities is alive and well with the citizens, very much seen in our winter rental program that we started this year. And there's a lot of creativity and care that comes from the gardeners as we see a lot of diversity in plots, a diversity in plants grown. And when folks are, you know, happen to be in the garden, at the same time, a lot of great conversations come from that. And that is something that we look to foster, is that community involvement between gardeners and sort of a collective sharing of education and learning for our lovely little plants. Now is the not fun part. Some of our weaknesses do include communication issues. We've had a lot of ways that people could pay for plots, ways that they have communicated in the past that have no longer been feasible. Many of the gardeners, the only way for them to attain a plot was through a mail-in paper application and check system, which ended up with a lot of things getting lost in the mail, things, you know, not getting seen or postmarked until way past the deadline. A lot of miscommunication of whose plots were whose, just because someone had one plot last year, they thought that meant they had it forever. A lot of issues like that that could really be fixed with a uniform system. So we are looking into that, as well as, unfortunately, a lot of the emails that I would mass send to the group were being thrown into a spam folder due to it being an email with about 71 people on it. So that is something that our tech folks at Dinosaur Hill have been looking into, as well as I've been doing some research on how to avoid that. And we are looking into a different form of digitizing this application to get rid of those issues. We have seen, despite the creativity and joy that a lot of our gardeners have, there is a little bit of a culture of a lack of respect for both city property and fellow gardener's space. We unfortunately had an instance where a new gardener to our community garden had all of his items torn from his plot after another gardener decided that that plot was hers. After multiple times of me telling her, no, that's not yours. Someone has planted in there, she just went and did it anyways, which was quite unfortunate because I know that gardener won't come back because that was not a positive experience for him. And he was from out of town. He was looking for something, lives in an apartment. I felt a lot of shame on my part that I was not able to communicate that well enough to our fellow gardener, that this was another person's space, and why can we not collaborate? So that is something that I really would like to kind of implement, a little bit more clear, concise communication there, which may involve some in-garden labeling and other aspects there as well, to keep from confusion. Because our last point on our weaknesses was just a general confusion of guideline enforcement. Every gardener, when they apply for a plot, gets a copy of the guidelines that have been worked on. They have essentially been the same guidelines since the dawn of the garden. And they agree to those guidelines before planting, which there were some things that were missing from those guidelines, like weeding around your plot, respecting your space and others' spaces, not letting your plants grow over the boxes, and other things of that nature, that we are really looking to clean up those guidelines and make everything as crystal clear as physically possible, so that there is not that communication mix-up where it could lead to somebody ripping out an entire plot of someone else's. Any questions so far?
Yeah. I mean, I can wait till the end, you know.
That's okay.
I just... Trent, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, Emily. It's a pleasure meeting you at the Halloween Hoots. So you've done a very good job, and thank you for putting this together. Yeah. So I'm curious on the math of 90 plots at $30 each equalling maybe 2,700 and not exactly 6,000? I mean, where's the extra funds coming from?
I may have misspoke there with 90 because it is closer to about 200.
Really?
There are...
When I counted them.
About 71 spaces and about three plots per space. So that comes down to...
Two-ten.
Two-ten, yes. Thank you.
Two-ten times 30, 6,300.
Okay.
Yep. And so then, those would be some that either there were some refunds that had to be made, other things of that nature.
Okay. Okay. Just wanted to understand. You've done a very good job of some of the things that... There have been a couple of people asking me some questions.
Absolutely.
Yeah. And your SWOT is touching on quite a few of those. And I go back to the strengths of being fully sold out. If there was a waitlist, someone was asking about that waitlist, like how they weren't, they never, they said they didn't hear from anybody. And I guess, like you said, there's a point of contact, or there's an email box that would go straight to you, or that I would assume. I don't think anybody's at the city or anyone. You're the point of contact.
Correct. Yes. So we steward it at Dinosaur Hill. There is an email that is garden@dinosaurhill that those emails get funneled to myself and our team. And I had up a lot of the response there. Unfortunately, a lot of those emails from that inbox, we did not have full access to that from the previous steward of the garden. So a lot of those were getting lost in the ether. So we are really looking to clean up a lot of that, so that that miscommunication does not happen, that those people do not feel left kind of standing out. I know that was a shortcoming of mine, that I was not able to fully attend to the citizens. And that's something that for 2025, I really am looking to clean that up and make sure that they know where to contact, they know who to contact, and that that response will happen within a 24-hour period.
Okay. Yeah, that was something that, well, good. And then, when you, the, there is that confusion that answers that. There, someone said there could be some abandoned plots that were not available for that person who wanted it. Was keeping an eye on that, Emily. I'm just saying.
Absolutely. So there were some plots that were forfeited, and we reallocate those plots starting June 1. So those plots go to either anyone on the waitlist still, or to those that have expressed interest in additional plots beyond the plots that they had already paid for. So any plots that, essentially, every gardener gets a warning. If we see other weed overgrowth, or we see lack of true growth going on in their plots about halfway through May, they get multiple messages that are like, hey, if you do not start doing stuff, you're gonna forfeit your plot. Please let us know if you'd like to forfeit it now. We do have a waitlist, just to keep that communication going. And those that completely give us radio silence, their plot does get reallocated.
Okay. Well, that's good. One more thing, there were, there used to be locks on the gates. And I was told that there have been a few people who have been coming in with their dogs, and also, they don't really have a plot, and they have been using or taking the food from around, you know, around the different plots. So I just thought, wouldn't that be nice to put the locks back on? Or was there a reason that locks...
So we do have locks. There are two locks on the garden in both entrances, as well as one internally that goes to the Dinosaur Hill Children's Garden. Those locks, it is a responsibility of the gardeners, which was another thing that was not fully fleshed out in the guidelines, is it's a responsibility of the gardener to open the lock, lock up when they're done. And unfortunately, some folks were trusting their community a little bit too much, perhaps, and leaving it unlocked, and thus giving way to, I called them the tomato vandals, because we had some folks that were stealing tomatoes and just tossing them around.
Well, actually, there aren't any locks on those gates anymore. That's, that was what I was told for almost a year, and then part of last year, was my understanding. So I was just wondering, going to the garden and taking looks at it, that's, I don't know if it's a periodic thing that you do, maybe once a month or something, and then that would be good. And I really like the fact that you're talking about opportunities, because community gardens, because the essence of the community garden, there gives so many opportunities to do things with the gardeners, or have a little, maybe mini-event, or, you know, you got vegetable swaps here. I love the fact, I like the opportunities that you're coming up to on the next slide to talk about. Because I think that that is what the, some of these people are looking for. Some people just wanna, you know, focus on their garden and get in and out, but that more, maybe more introverted. But I think that something would be good to have, you know, maybe even a fall cleanup together, or, you know, or spring cleanup. Maybe we, they all help each other, but anyway.
Absolutely. That is, that is something that I will definitely go into with our opportunities. And I am gonna, I'm gonna be looking around because I've been visiting the garden quite a lot this season, and there were locks the last time I went.
Well, and maybe a harvest event, you know, something would be really cool to do that.
Yes. So in our opportunities, having more updated, clearer, and more concise guidelines that kind of focus in on a lot of these issues that we've seen for the past, you know, few seasons. I started stewarding the garden in about 2023, and that, I know that first season was incredibly messy because I was inheriting a lot of information that was not well organized. And I did my best to organize it. And I think 2025 here is where I can see a lot of the opportunities and the things that I've been looking forward to with making this a community garden instead of a community garden. So we are digitizing the application again, streamlining that communication process. So then, all information will come out from our Dinosaur Hill website. So they already will have an account with our website. They will already have our emails greenlisted, as well as in the guidelines, I will have a little note in there for those that may not be as comfortable with their emails or technology, to have instructions of how to add Dinosaur Hill emails to their contact list, to save it from going into the spam box.
No, that's, that's great. Thank you.
Yeah. And we are looking forward to more community workdays, vegetable swaps, things of that nature, because we did have a lot of folks that, you know, as gardens do, when they're bountiful, you have bounty, and not everybody can eat a million tomatoes in a season. I know personally, I gardened in the Dinosaur Hill garden this year, and I had more chamomile than I could shake a stick at. So a lot of people got a lot of tea this season from me. So that is something that we are looking forward to, to encourage, you know, tending to the area together, because one of our, you know, troubles that we have as well is that there seems to be a lack of education with the garden, with our gardeners, because we've seen folks that they'll weed their garden and leave the weeds in the gravel pathways, which then leads to weeds in the pathway, which makes it a lot more dangerous for those that do require extra accommodations, that do need our ADA compliant plots. So we're really looking forward to being like, hey, in a kind way, let's make sure these pathways are pretty and walkable, or rollable. And then adding in those community workdays, vegetable swaps, you know, perhaps like a kind of lunch and learn educational timeframe, you know? The summertime is when people have that energy to take in a lot more of that information. So we're really looking forward to using the strengths of our gardeners, as well as the strengths of our volunteers at Dinosaur Hill, to foster education. And really, something intergenerational is something that I'm looking forward to, because I know a lot of friends my age and younger have had a lot of interest in the community garden. Cause I know a lot of friends my age and younger have had a lot of interest in the community garden. And there's a lot of things that we could all learn from each other. And so that's something that I'd really love to foster with getting more gardeners into the garden, getting folks to engage with each other, whether digitally or physically. So that those communication highways are open, so that it's like, you know, if I went to Nancy and said, hey, I don't know what my rutabaga is doing, and she knew what rutabaga was about, I'd be able to learn that from her in a safe, controlled environment. So that's something that I really look forward to and I'm hoping to, not to pun, but plant the seeds for those kinds of interactions. A few threats, um, you know, there's always threats, but difficulty changing from the target market. Uh, there is interest in a younger crowd, but nobody likes change, especially when they've been doing something the same way for years and years and years. We have had a few, I wouldn't say angry, but perturbed gardeners that when they don't get the exact plot that they've had before, they get a little upset and I have to remind them kindly that this is the city's property, this is not your property, and you're here for a season. Hopefully, you know, you enjoy this plot. We can do our best to accommodate you being here again, but that's never a guarantee. Uh, we've had some folks that have had difficulty having that kind of renters mindset or community mindset of this is not my space forever. Uh, we did have some folks leave some annuals in their plots thinking that they would come back in the next year, which unfortunately from twenty-twenty-three to twenty-twenty-four, we had to tell them, hey, you can't do that, cause we didn't have our winter rental fee or anything like that. So that's where a lot of these ideas are kind of coming is like voice of the gardener is in my mind. Is any changes that we make is for the gardener from the voice of the gardener to make sure that gardening stays happy. Uh, our Wabash Garden in Rochester Hills has been unfortunately ignored. Um, I have had an incredibly difficult time communicating the struggles of those gardeners to the Rochester Hills City and, um, their constituents there. Uh, going so far as to fill out the QR code form of tell us how the Wabash Park is doing, where I said, hi, it's Emily from the garden. Can we get this fence fixed? Because there's a bunch of rabbits coming in and eating people's stuff, with no response. I have emailed Brian Barnett multiple times and been, hey, it's Emily from the garden. Can we get this fixed? To nothing more than, oh, I'll get my guys on it and then nothing happens. So unfortunately, that is something that I continue to be a squeaky wheel because that is one of my best qualities. But, uh, it is something that I don't know how the city of Rochester could play into that. But if we could have city of Rochester support in being a bigger squeaky wheel for us, I think that would really appease those gardeners. Cause while that garden is a lot smaller than the city of Rochester garden, they are still. Yep, sorry. No, you're okay.
I, I didn't realize it was smaller.
Yep, so that garden is, um, about, there are eight plots per letter and it is A through G. So it is a lot smaller, a lot more compact. It is right, uh, at the corner of Wabash and, oh, I believe it's Norton Lawn, right down there. Um, right behind Cumberland Estates in that neighborhood, right behind the park there. Uh, there's a lovely little playground there and we have a lot of people that are really dedicated to that garden. But a lot of the plot boxes are starting to rot. It, it needs a bit of an overhaul like our good old city of Rochester garden had. And it seems like Rochester Hills is not seeing those needs. And so any way that we can elevate those needs, we can elevate those voices of those gardeners would be incredibly helpful. And I'd be happy to speak with the council more on that to see what we could do there. Cause I'm not entirely sure of jurisdictions between the cities and other things like that. I just work for a nature preserve. Uh, the last point here on our threats is, um, our, our hoses and tool quality. So we offer a lot of tools for folks to utilize so that, you know, nobody has to go to a Home Depot, Lowe's, Ace Hardware and spend a bunch on tools. We have, you know, spades, we have, you know, hose, tillers, things like that to just make it a little bit easier. And we offer hoses that hook up to our water lines that the city and the Department of Public Works are very good to make sure our water lines are all good to go. But we have had some issues with improper usage of the hoses and them getting a little kinked, getting to be not the most high quality. So we are looking into seeing if those need to be replaced for the new season and the best ways that we can educate our gardeners of, hey, maybe don't leave it kinked in the middle of the pathway for people to step on. So it's those little things of tending to the things that are available in the garden to make sure that they last for much longer than say a season, two seasons. So that's something that we're doing a little bit of research on to see what in our budget could work for that as well as what would be the best way to either winterize those items or to keep them through the season so that they're accessible to all gardeners while also not having the risk of being damaged. Some photos here of some of the bounty. We have strawberries, radishes, some chamomile, a lovely dragonfly on, uh, some of the flowers that were in our garden here. A lot of great bounty and, uh, I open the floor to some questions if anybody has any.
Questions tonight. Uh, Mayor Protem Salvia.
Thank you, thank you, Emily. Thank you for your presentation. Thank you for being here and informing us and the public about the community garden. It's really important. Um, I was also happy to hear when I talked to you beforehand that you felt like there was good communication between yourself and the city of Rochester. So I think that's probably Marcy and Jason are your primary contacts.
Correct, yes.
So thank you. Glad our communication is working. And then I just wanted to clarify, if people wanna get in contact with you regarding the garden, the email address is garden@dinosaurhill.com.
That is, uh, one of the emails, the best email personally. For me.
Dot org or dot com?
It's dot org.
Dot org.
Yep, so my personal email for Dinosaur Hill is emily@dinosaurhill.org. So that is a great way, if they have any questions or anything preseason, that is a perfect way to get in contact with me. And we'll be posting to both our email chain of our members and supporters as well as our Facebook page and our website when those applications for the garden become available. And I have contact information for the previous gardeners that I will be emailing individually, so they all get it. Uh, information about renewing, uh, for the coming year.
Wonderful, thank you.
Yes, of course. And again, I appreciate you guys letting me come up here and talk about the garden for about twenty minutes. And I really believe in transparency, so that's why, you know, I didn't kind of hide anything of the threats and problems. Like I know that I have dropped the ball on a lot of things for this garden and I really look forward to making it a positive experience in the future. And change is gonna be a little bit difficult, it always is. But that's something that I am willing to be the bad guy for a season and make sure that this garden is the best it can be for all Rochester citizens. So thank you all very much.
Great, thank you.
Emily, thank you very much for coming here.
Of course, thank you for having me.
No, of course, but I really appreciate the information you presented. I think it's very helpful for us to see the good and, and maybe some of the not so good because it's, it's, all the cards are facing up and we're here to help you and do whatever we can to, to make this as, as productive and efficient as possible. So thanks a lot for doing this, okay?
Thank you again. And you know, transparency is like my favorite thing in the world. So I appreciate y'all letting me come up here and be me and tell you about this garden.
Thanks a lot, Emily.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Any other questions?
No.
Think you're done?
Thank you.
Um, wow, those were some great public comments tonight.
Yeah.
Um, are there any further comments? Brian, are you out there?
He's having audio issues.
Okay, there aren't any. Okay, well, if he comes back on and finds something, we'll do that. Um, approval of amendments, are we doing that?
No, you're on, I'll, I'll have all those.
Um, next is approval of the consent agenda. It's a consideration to approve the Rochester Goodfellas paper sale event, our annual event.
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember Sage, support by Councilmember Trent. Madam Clerk, the role please.
Bixson?
Yes.
Salvia?
Yes.
Hauser?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Sage?
Yes.
Trent?
Yes.
Thank you. There are no old business or table items. There are no public hearings tonight, legislative deliberation. First is a consideration of ordinance amendment section thirty-two dash three-one-five, disclosure of concealed pistol, second reading and adoption. We talked about that last time. Mayor Protem Salvia.
Yeah, I make a motion to move this ordinance amendment for second reading and adoption.
Support.
Motion by Mayor Protem, support by Councilmember Hauser. Discussion. Madam Clerk, the role please.
Bixson?
Yes.
Salvia?
Yes.
Hauser?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Sage?
Yes.
Trent?
Yes.
Thank you. Next on to reports and regular business. First is a consideration to approve universal fidelity for collection for the auto parking program, which is for our parking tickets that people are not paying. Chief, welcome. And then we also have our, um, new traffic person here to be introduced.
Yeah, I just, uh, I don't know if all of you have met Dave Custer. I thought it was appropriate to bring him here tonight just to introduce you to him. You'll see him out in that scooter with that helmet on. Went up and down Main Street to the meters. But Dave is our new, um, parking operations coordinator. He's also one of our ordinance officers and he, he also fills in at dispatch, so he's very well-rounded, does a great job. And ever since he's been in this position, this parking program here is moving forward. Um, you've all, I've hoped you've read a lot of the reports I've been submitting of all the things we're working on. And again, this whole parking program, there's, there's a million pieces to it and it's not easy. And, uh, we're doing our best to make it more efficient. And before we discuss this, I just wanna make sure I get this in. Is we have our new, uh, ticket validation program that's live now. So any of the businesses in the community, and Christie's supposed to be putting out a letter, I gave her to all the business, uh, community. Um, what they can do is they can purchase parking validation tickets from us. If they have a certain event or if people wanna come for dinner at the restaurant, the owner of the business or manager can provide them with a ticket validation and parkings on them. So I think it's gonna be a great thing for the business. We'll see how this goes and we'll tweak it as it goes. But right now it's live and any business owner can contact Dave and, um, his email's on the letter and phone number and they can start purchasing tickets. And it's perfect timing. It's the shopping season here at Christmas, so. So with that, I'm ready to talk about universal fidelity. Um, as you know, based on all these reports, um, I can talk about a weakness. We, we don't have a means to collect funds from people that don't pay parking tickets. We did an audit for the past four years and that audit indicated that we have over ninety thousand dollars in outstanding tickets and no means to collect. So what Dave did, he called a number of places. We just wanted to make sure that we were in the ballpark. This company here wants to charge us a commission of twenty-three point five percent, which is very reasonable. All these other companies, we called four or five other ones. Um, some of them wouldn't even look at us, were too small. Most of them were forty-five to fifty percent. And some of them had a minimum of five hundred dollars to collect. So this is very reasonable. The city of Birmingham uses them. They're happy with their services. And not only can they collect, uh, unpaid parking tickets, but if we have any individuals that owe the city money, they're willing to take on that too, same fee, twenty-three point five. So how this works is we're gonna supply them with the individuals that have outstanding tickets with certain information. They're gonna do their best to contact these people and try to get payment. Every month we'll get a report and it indicate who they collected from, how much they collected from, the date and all that good stuff. They'll submit the report to us. They'll take their commission right off the top and they'll cut us a check every month after they took their commission out. And then we will post the payment that the people paid and that's it. It's, it's very simple. And you know what? If it doesn't work, we don't like them, we can also cancel this. Mr. Kraut reviewed the, uh, contract and we went, went over a few things. He wanted a few minor changes. They changed it. And, and again, if, if we don't like the services, we can opt out, so. But I, I think this is, uh, it's, I'm sorry, Dave. This is something that we absolutely need. And, um, it's a lot of money out in the street. And I like to start, even if we collect the ten dollars, it's better than what we have now, so.
And we, we only pay on what we collect, so, or what they collect, so, um, it's not on every single ticket. They don't get a, a chunk of every ticket, even if we don't collect on it, so.
It's basically the, the names that we provide them. If someone comes to City Hall, wants to pay their ticket, they, they get no commission from it. That's, that's us. It's just unpaid tickets. And usually our tickets are, there's a, they're twenty dollars for a parking, uh, ticket. And after fourteen days, it turns into fifty dollars. So the minimum is fifty dollars on each one of these things, so. But it adds up. We have people that owe six, seven, eight tickets. And, um, it's just a lot. Our city ordinance states that we can tow a car after six, but that's something we may wanna look into too, cause that's, that's, that's a, that's a big number, six tickets.
Yeah, I thought that.
That's a blatant, that's just blatant. And, uh, six is, that's a lot of leeway.
Yeah, Ms., uh, Mr. Seemager, why don't you put that on the list as something to look at?
Absolutely.
Mayor Protem Salvia.
Thank you. Um, I, I support this. This is, this is needed, you know? We're not trying to write tickets to, you know, create a bunch of money, but if, if someone is issued a violation, we should be collecting on it. Um, my question is, there are so many scams out there in particular for seniors. When a senior or someone else gets a call from, if it's universal fidelity, how are they identifying themselves? Um, are they saying this happened in Rochester? Um, you know, I know a senior that had a parking ticket in the city of Detroit and the service, they were very unsure about responding and so I had to get involved and help them. So how, how are they gonna do that and how can we make sure that people aren't, I'll say confused by what's happening?
Yeah, you always have to be hilarious scams because I get calls every day, somebody wants two thousand dollars from me in Bitcoin. And I, I get calls every day about that and you really do. You, that, that's a very good point. Um, they're gonna have specific information like a ticket number, the date, you know, the vehicle information and things like that. And we can also, if there is an issue where someone's confused, they can provide them with the police department's phone number and Dave's number. They can contact him, you know, as a buffer and we'll be more than happy to speak to them too, so.
All our information should be on that.
Mr. Mayor, could you talk about the stickers that we found throughout town?
That was my other, that was my question.
Yes, just briefly. We were notified by another department that they had bogus QR codes on all the meters. If you look at our meters, there's a black QR code on every meter. So we went around and checked all our meters. We have seven hundred and nine meters and we did find there was twenty of them. They're bogus codes. At first, if you, if you click down the code, it would go to a park mobile site. That's who we use for parking. It looked legit. You can only put, insert a license plate, but it wouldn't do anything after that. So Dave went on the next day, cause we thought it may, maybe this is just a test cause they're, they weren't in just one spot. They were spread out all over the place in the city and they're very, whoever put them on did it, they took some time to put them on. It looked nice. But, um, the next day you can go on and sure, and our biggest fear is you can put it, your credit card number in there now. So wherever, we're trying to determine where that money's going and who set this up. So it is a, it is a current police investigation, but we did remove all the bogus ones off the meters and we're checking them every single day to make certain that it doesn't continue, so. But this is going on, it's probably happening in fifty different cities. This is a, a clear criminal enterprise. That's what you would call it, operating a criminal enterprise. But, uh, and, uh, we'll do our best to find out who's doing this, but, uh, we're, we're safe in town here for now, so we're on top of it.
Just, cause remember Hauser? Sure, just a quick question. She, I think this is a fantastic program and maybe this is more a question for Jeff and maybe the chief too. And I don't wanna get too deep with the weeds, but I'm presuming there's maybe hundreds or thousands of people who have outstanding tickets. Do, you're not gonna, they're not gonna call you for each ticket, say, hey, this guy's willing to take X dollars. How does that deal work? Do you know the mechanics of that?
We've, I mean, we've done in the past where somebody's having a difficult time financially, we'll work with you. Again, we're not looking, you know, we don't make a lot of money in this program. There's so many expenses that are involved with all the different lots and meters and technology and lighting and cleaning and, and the, and the fees for the staffing and we're not looking to get rich, but if somebody doesn't, and we do it all the time. I hear Dave on the phone, if someone doesn't have the money, it's Christmas, he'll work out a deal.
Perfect.
Simple as that. We'll work out a deal. Um, we don't wanna, you know, pull every dollar out of your wallet, but, uh, you know, at least contact us so we can have that conversation. That's all I ask.
Sure.
Working with a scalpel law, uh, who owes, uh, six citations and she's on payment line right now, so, what she can afford.
Ms. Moore Jones?
Um, just a couple of questions. First off, I was just so impressed by this company that we're looking to probably hire. All the detail they gave, their PowerPoint presentation, all the insurance that's necessary for them. So thank you for the research you did and finding, um, all the choices for us. Um, what is the, um, parking department right now? Like who, is it just the one person involved in giving tickets? I'm just curious.
We have, we have a full-time parking and, uh, actually I ta, we have one full-time parking enforcement officer and one part-time parking enforcement officer and they work different days. We try to capture the weekends, some of the weekends in late hours since we change the times on the meters. So that's. So that's important too. And you've seen the stats that I submitted just on the one part-timer or the, the full-timer, the new, he, he wrote a thousand sixty-two tickets in one month. I mean, it's just, it's unbelievable, the number of people that pay for parking. But, uh, but yeah, I mean, honestly, I'd like to come back later on and, and ask for another part-timer because the salary would be paid in three months.
So what was it before? Cause you've hired a halftime then? Cause the tickets have definitely gone up.
Yes.
The ticket rate, so.
Well, we always had the part-timer run. And then our ordinance officers were out there too. But one thing you have to remember too, is we get a list every morning of meters that are not functioning. And sometimes, what is it, what, sixty, seventy meters? They're just not communicating. So you have to go out there and reset the meters. And there might be a SIM card that needs to be replaced. There's a lot of maintenance involved with these meters. Plus you have to empty the meters. And pull all the coins out of them. You have to take it to the bank, stand in line. So there's just a lot involved. You know, then you have the decks, the, the technology of the decks. We're constantly over there making certain that those are working, make certain that there's tickets. We're cleaning the machines over there, the arms. You know, we had one guy, he decided to walk out of the structure and rip the arm off, you know? He had a little bit too much, but, uh, but he paid for it. And, uh, but it just, there's a lot of maintenance. You can talk to our DPW. Um, they're, they're constantly doing maintenance on, whether it's striping or fixing the cement or cleaning them every day, fixing the lights. Stairways, cleaning.
Yeah.
So there's just, there's just a lot involved. There really is. But, uh, I think we do, honestly, I think we do a great job. And my goal here is to have the best parking program in Michigan when we're done. And all these things that I listed on that sheet, I'm very confident that they'll all be achieved in the next six months. There's no reason why they can't be.
You've definitely been extremely organized and we appreciate all that you have added. I have one more question. IPS, sounds like, um, they're working on some things for us. And it sounds like you're saying here that they will be, uh, the company taking the payments for parking. What is now and then what will it be then?
Well, right now there's an option. You can go, you can, you can go on the city website and pay, or you can go through IPS.
So you would pay right to the city on that one option?
We want one merchant. So, right now, what we're working on is if you want a parking pass or a deck pass, you go online. And you can apply for your parking pass for any of the metered parking lots. And you can print your own pass online. You have to put your license plate near the vehicle description. And then if you want a deck card, you don't have to take the day off to come to City Hall. You just apply online. We'll have your deck card in dispatch, so you can come twenty-four seven and pick up your deck card. We just want to make it more convenient. And the, the, the nice thing is you can go online. It's just more convenient. One merchant collecting the money, not two, which is simple. Every month, we get a check from them.
So that would be, um, instead of the city of Rochester collecting, IPS would collect.
Correct.
So they must have a fee involved in that, right?
The fee, what is that fee?
It's three hundred.
Three fifty a month.
Three hundred and fifty a month, to do all, there would be all the collections.
Three, three hundred a month.
Yeah, three hundred a month. That's just for that, that's, this new piece, which I think is very reasonable. Every morning we have to post payments. We get a sheet sometimes, and especially Monday, there could be sixty, seventy ticket numbers on that sheet. We have to, we have to post every single payment every morning. That takes a lot of time. That's a lot of labor cost. We can be out in the street working on meters, we can be doing other things here.
So they'll take.
So for three hundred dollars a month. And we can make up that fee by adding on like a, like a convenience fee, like a dollar fifty or something. We can, we can, it'd be basically a wash when we're done. And we're, and we're more efficient.
So this comes out of our office, which will probably leave, obviously work. And they'll do everything. All payments go to them, they cut us a check.
Yep.
We pay them three hundred dollars.
Yes.
Okay, all right.
Yes.
Thanks.
I have just one question.
Uh, Councilmember Trent?
So, does the behavior start changing when people realize that there is more enforcement of these tickets? I mean, do you think that there is like, I mean, then you would have less people maybe, yeah, I mean.
You would think so. We, we have many repeat offenders. And when you see that word collections in capital letters, that's not a pretty word. I, I would want to pay my ticket. You know, that, that's just, you don't want that. I mean, it's just pay the fine. And, and again, if you can't afford it, we'll work with you.
Uh, and I have another question. Sometimes the meters aren't working and I haven't been able to put any money in it. Um, is that, can you tell if that's happening when somebody might get a ticket? Now, it wasn't me. I'm just, I'm just hypothetically, somebody.
I'll test the meter, I'll, I'll look at it, uh, in the back system. And I can see, uh, patterns if someone was using a credit card at the time. If, you know, I, it, everything's documented in the back end. And I, I'd love to show you sometime if you want to see it.
Well, thank.
That we look at and, and, uh.
No, I mean, yeah, I mean, who knew? Parking was so, you know, complex.
They work pretty well.
Yeah.
Uh, we had a couple of hiccups, but now we're, we're seeing almost, we're almost perfect.
And, and the other question is about when you're, you know, if you might, someone might be having problems trying to get out of a parking structure. I've heard they have. Did the person on the other end, is, is that a real person in the office saying, can I help you?
With their new technology, it's great because you just hit the help button. We can see you on the camera. So you have, you hit the button or we'll, we'll just talk to you. Just tell us what your problem is. His phone a ring?
I can do it right now.
The dispatchers ring and he can do everything from a cell phone right here. He can talk to the person and, and make the correction. He can open up the gate with his cell phone.
Awesome.
It's just great technology. And, you know, at first we did have connectivity issues with this new technology. But honestly, it's getting better and better every month. We're having less problems. But now we have the ability, before you had to hit the help button. People, they didn't know to hit the help button.
No.
We couldn't speak to them. You know, it's, so now it's just, it's a lot better. It's getting better, even better. And, um, we're not having many.
Yeah, it seems like.
Issues. I, I think things are going smooth for both decks, so.
Well, there was a voice that came out all of a sudden saying, can I help you? And I did not hit the help button.
Probably was his.
I must, it was a woman. It was a woman who said, can I help you? And I thought, well, I probably look like I need help. Okay, thank you. And you're doing a great job.
Dispatchers.
Yeah, she was very nice.
What's nice is the dispatchers used to take the majority of these calls and the phone, it would ring on the non-emergency line. The dispatcher would have to pick up the phone. Now, that's no more.
Oh, it was pretty fast.
It goes to his phone or the other ordinance officer's phone. And they manage the problem where the dispatch can focus on their duties.
Okay, now you're doing a good job. Thank you.
Councilmember Jones?
Um, I would like to make a motion, um, to approve universal fidelity for collections for the auto parking program.
Motion by Councilmember Jones, supported by Councilmember Trent. Madam Clerk, the roll please.
Bixson?
Yes.
Sylvia?
Yes.
Howser?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Sage?
Yes.
Trent?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you guys. Welcome.
Thank you.
Uh, next is consideration of resolution adopting the proposed updates to the master fee schedule. Marcy, are you speaking on this?
Thank you. So in your packet tonight is, uh, annual review of the master fee schedule. So we take a look at this as part of our annual process. We just want to not get behind. Um, we, we, uh, caught up on this a few years back and, and we are diligent, uh, we trying not to ever fall behind again. So the estimated impact of the proposal before you is an additional ten thousand annually. Uh, it's, it's an estimate. What we do to come up with that number is we look at the actual permits or fees that were charged in the preceding twelve months. And apply the new rates to those, uh, fees that we're proposing changes to. And that's how we come up with our estimated increase. So, as we review the fees, uh, we look to make sure that it covers operational costs here at the city. As well as the regional standards. Because our community, we do a community comparable. And then we propose those changes to our budget and finance committee. They give us feedback. We go back and forth. And then, uh, the proposed changes are, we believe, we, uh, endorsed by the committee tonight. So what we'd like to walk you through is just a synopsis of those changes. In the packet, we have a quick look so that you don't have to go through the entire master fee schedule. And the first section is the building department and planning section, which includes fifty-six changes. Some of which are adjustments, which are modifications to, I'll call out the, a generator permit fee. We previously had it on the permit fee at a hundred and fifty dollars when, uh, a trade permit is pulled for that. When we did our community comparable, we found that that was, uh, out of, out of, uh, whack. And we are proposing tonight to make it, uh, more reasonable twenty dollars for that. Um, other changes are, um, thirty-five out of those fifty-six are in the plumbing, uh, trades fee. Because we had not made changes to the plumbing fee or structure for a few years. And then when we go back into the comparable communities, we find that we were understated in the expenses. So we're just making those, or proposing to make those changes tonight. So, uh, a new fee was added. It's been a timely topic here at city council and that's the rental registration and inspection fee. And it is, uh, before that would be enforceable. There would need to be a code change to the city. So this is a proposed fee that we would like to present to council. But this will not be in effect until city council determines that the code fee, the, the code is changed to, uh, reflect council's opinion on that, on that topic. So I brought with me, um, and I'll ask if you have any questions on that. Our fire chief and city attorney is ready to answer any questions that might be on that particular topic.
Okay, so, so I have a question. And I've talked to a few council people. Um, I've had some business owners, some rental property owners say, why do we have to pay a hundred dollars? If the city's doing restaurants and stuff for free? And so, and I don't see that the change here, it's just rental property. And they're saying, why are they, why are we going to do that business and charge a hundred and not do the Chop House or something like that? That's, that's for free. And so it seems to me that you need to, and that, that's an argument to me that makes sense. So I just wanted to throw that out there for council. I, I don't know, chief, if you want to.
Right.
Opine on that?
If you, um, I have to go back into the wayback machine to about, uh, two thousand and nine. Um, when we started doing the business license registration, that's just been part of the city code for a long time. I put together a proposal for council's consideration. At that time, we looked at charging fifteen dollars per business license, which would have covered the cost. It was the pleasure of the council at that time to not have any fee. When we went ahead and around the same timeframe, we looked at, uh, rental registrations. And rental registrations, uh, was being, uh, proposed to look at health and safety from a standpoint. We're having issues with some of the rental properties. Um, we made a presentation to go ahead and charge for the rental property. Um, and also made a presentation to go ahead and do inspections. Uh, and both of those were, uh, decided to not to be put in the way they were proposed. But they were adopted to be an annual rental registration and a self-inspection with an audit of ten percent that we were, we chose randomly. And at the time, there was no fee attached to it. Uh, we have been listening to comments of council and council members. Um, so when this came up, I suggested to Marcy that we, uh, added into the, uh, master fee schedule. Um, and that it was a, a kind of coming back to council to go ahead and take a look at. I've not put together anything yet for business license registration, uh, only with the rental registration. Um, we've had several conversations here at council in regards to blight. And we've, uh, as I've identified, the largest number of properties that we deal with, with blight are rental properties. Um, and we spend an inordinate amount of time doing that and taking care of it. Again, um, this is a proposal. The, the fee that we're proposing is a hundred and fifty dollars. That covers the cost of, uh, doing the rental registration, the issuance of the occupancy permits, doing an exterior, excuse me, exterior review of all of the rental properties. And then with a, a selection of, of a random selection of property inspection of the inside, we'll still do the, um, self-inspection that's part of it. Um, the cost of it came out to a hundred and thirty-nine dollars. Uh, we put it at one fifty, uh, to go ahead and cover any unknown cost. Again, it's to council's, uh, um, pleasure as to whether you'd like to do it or not. Currently, we are not going to propose a change unless council so directs us. We'll continue to do the rental registration. We'll continue to do the, um, uh, the audit of the, of the properties. Allow the, a person who owns the property to go ahead and do the self-inspection. But I just don't have the staff to be able to take a look at every single rental property in the, in the town unless I have, I, and so that's why we put the fee of doing that within this, uh, proposal.
And, and I was just gonna say, I mean, th- thank you for that. And I agree with the rental. It just seems to me that, in a way, you're picking one business, making them do it. And you're picking another business and they don't have to do it. Councilmember Howser?
Quick question. Chief, thank you so much for that explanation. I want to just understand two quick things. Can you remind me briefly, how many, the approximate number of rental units, not including apartments, but like homes?
Five hundred. So, so we have about three hundred and twenty individual structures with, right at about five hundred units. And, and the reason why I identify that is if you take a look at, um, Pine Street, there's a house that's rented there. It has six units in it.
Duplexers.
So it's one structure, but six units.
Okay. And then the follow-up question to that, chief, is, just so I understand, a, a level set. Right now, is there a fifty-dollar registration fee or is there no fee?
There is no registration fee.
No fee, okay, so.
The only time councilperson that comes into it is if they fail to register. Um, and again, w- we've always gone with compliance. And, uh, Attorney Kraut, if you help my memory, I don't think we've ever, have we charged a fee yet on even people we've taken to court?
Sometimes if they've, it depends on where they were in the process, the court may have assessed its fee. But we haven't, uh, uh, oftentimes that, when we have those violations, they'll, they'll take care of it after the fact with your office. And then we frequently have just dismissed it without having to pay any fees at all. Sometimes if they, if they kind of don't comply with the court process, sometimes they'll be defaulted. Um, and, but that's not anything the city initiates. Um, that's just failing to appear and they may get defaulted on that. But most often I get direction from the fire department to say, the person is now, has now, albeit late, has now registered. And please, uh, it's a first offense for this particular, uh, property owner, so please dismiss it. And oftentimes I'm able to do it without having to show back up in court too, so.
The only thing I would say is I think on the sheet, and my computer just walked out on me, I think it says fifty dollars. Uh, so is that a?
That's just a mistake.
It is a, well, it is a mistake.
Under P forty-four.
Yeah. Property, it kind of included all inspections in one catch.
Okay.
And so, yeah, I'm sorry. So that we do have a fee for vacant properties? The vacant property came around in two thousand and nine when we had the, uh, recession. And we saw a pro, a vacant property within the city rise. And so we, uh, provo, proactively went after looking at those properties to go ahead and get registered. So that they didn't become unsafe and, and more blighted than what they already were. So there is a fee for that.
Okay.
And there's also a, a fee, um, in regards to what we call change of tenancy. Change of tenancy would be for a business that, um, you had a, you, you had a person who was selling soap. Uh, they decide to close and now a new person comes in to selling shoes. Which you, you would do a change of tenancy that pays for, uh, fire, building and site plan evaluation. To make sure that everything is okay from a site plan. We look at the building, we make sure that it's safe. Uh, the fire codes are met and those sort of things. We do have a fee for that.
Councilmember Jones?
Um, so it sounds like it's a future discussion because it, it means changing an ordinance. As far as that, both adding businesses potentially and adding a fee, correct?
If, if I may, I.
City Attorney?
I, I don't have the, the rental property, uh, ordinance in front of me. But I, I believe it says, that it does say that they, they would have to pay any fee as established by resolution already. So I think if, if we do, and if we do pass the fee resolution, then that would be sufficient without a code, uh, without a code amendment. We, we tried to go, we tried to go through that, uh, some years ago to get them all into the master fee schedule. So we didn't have to change the ordinance at all. Um, I just will check that, cause I know we just made some, uh, significant modification to the, uh, rental fee, excuse me, the rental property ordinance regarding short-term rentals. So, uh, I, I will confirm with, uh, Marcy, uh, tomorrow, uh, just to make sure that, uh, if city council passes this, that, that would in fact, um, be effective. Um, because it does provide for it to be done in that fashion, unless you say otherwise.
Residential, that does not include business, correct?
Correct.
So if we wanted to include business, that would be a future dis- So if we wanted to include business, that would be a future discussion relating to ordinance, correct?
This, this would be the rental property.
This is just for, um, residential tonight.
Residential rental property. Could you add business tonight if we wanted to? Sure.
Um, so my other point then is so if, best case scenario, five hundred, um, we, that would be an extra seventy-five thousand dollars coming in, which might go towards the fact that this would be a burden on your staff, et cetera. Um, so you did not, when you said ten thousand annually, you couldn't include that because you thought an ordinance would be involved? Okay, all right, okay.
Councilor Trent?
Yeah, I mean, to the question about why a restaurant isn't charged, but a rental property is, m- my understanding is they're paying commercial taxes. Isn't that a little bit higher than a rental property? I don't know.
No, it's not.
No, as far as I'm concerned. So they, so they're saying that they're both, they're both businesses because you are turning it into a business. I guess I'd have to look that up some more and do some research, cause it's just.
I, I, I think the distinction would be for anyone who would ask would be, it's more of a health and safety issue. I think that's what I would focus on this, you know, and say, listen, if you have a restaurant, if you have a business, you have an open business that you're, you're letting the public in. The fire chief or police chief can always go in and look at capacity. They can make sure that the egress and ingress is done. Whereas a private structure, you don't really know what's going on in there. And if there's a call or if there's an officer that has to go to the house, they wanna know what's the condition of that house inside. I wanna make sure that the safety of the firemen and the firewomen or the first responders walking into that, they wanna know that that structure is physically sound. That's how I would look at the distinction between why one and not the other.
Yeah, there, there actually is in the s- in the state of Michigan. Um, it's actually the purview of the state fire marshal is, is charged with inspecting all assembly type operations, of which a restaurant is.
Right.
Unfortunately, the state fire marshal doesn't have the staff to do that, so that falls down to the fire department. Then we start taking a look at mercantile and other stores. Um, within the fire code, uh, we go ahead and we do annual inspections for those. We do about seven hundred businesses that we inspect on an annual basis. Um, we do not charge for those. We look at those as being for a fire. Um, if there would have been a charge, we would have maybe have suggested that to be at the initial business license piece of it. Um, and then we do charge though if we have to go in multiple times. If the building owner is not taking care of the safety hazards, uh, we do charge them for additional inspections.
But, but a business or a rental, you're looking at safety issues?
We are always looking at safety issues, Mr. Mayor. Um, and that's what you cha- charge us to do within the fire department and the building department from a safety's perspective there. Again, w- we were, we're trying to be proactive and listen to comments that council has made during the last year and we're trying to be a little bit proactive. Uh, this is a suggestion for your consideration. Obviously, we're going to continue doing inspections and registrations regardless of whether you de- determine to move on this or not. But I wanna be, uh, physically responsible and to go ahead and identify where the costs are at so that when we are in our budget preparation and, um, uh, we might need to ask for additional funding within the fire department, you understand why we have it there. Or in this case, if we do get, uh, funding for it, it can be identified whether, however, uh, our treasury department would do it so that it's identified and you know where it's there, again, for, uh, for full transparency.
I have one final question, I'm sorry, but this is important for me. So presuming that these fees are approved and adopted and the city moves forward and charges a hundred and fifty-dollar rental fee. And that money, let's just say it's fifty thousand dollars annually that comes in. Does city council have the ability to earmark where those specific funds are to be used? Or does it all go into the general fund and then we decide amongst ourselves in February or March where that goes?
I'll have to, I don't think we can earmark stuff.
It kind of depends on the department. Like if it were, uh, building department function, there's restrictions on where that money can be used and how that money can be used. If it is fire department, that's a general fund, uh, revenue source, so it would be more widely spread. But it, it's gonna depend on how we staff and, uh, the revenues that are generated by that said staff number.
Okay, so for purposes of this discussion, the increase, any additional dollars that came in of any of those particular items would all ostensibly go into the general fund for distribution amongst us at a budget meeting, correct?
What we're talking about right now is building, the building, and that, that has some more restrictions than some of the other ones, like park reservation revenue that would come in. So in this instance, it will, it, there's a, there's a few more caveats to it. So, um, in general, yes. But I think that when it, when it's building related, you, uh, we handle that a little differently than we would just regular general five dollars.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Jones?
Um, I know you didn't finish the rest of what you were do- you were gonna do in the beginning. You were gonna review everything, cause I have other questions on other things within the fee schedule. Um, but just pertaining to this topic, um, do we have to vote on this tonight? Cause adding, I believe, the businesses to the inspection is worthy of us stepping back and talking a little bit and thinking about that a little bit. So if that has to be decided tonight, I feel like I'm not sure that this should be voted on today.
If I may, I, I would, I would try to split these because that's something we never heard of before. It's a, it's certainly a, a topic to have. If in fact we approve this rental registration, I can guarantee you at goals and objectives, you're gonna hear from me, a different way to run this code enforcement. Code enforcement's been really hot in this community and we can't keep doing it for free. And we're not efficient, we're getting our, all of our, uh, integrity questioned by many people lately about how are you following up? We're just not staffed for it. So if there's a revenue source, we can find a better way to staff it, so.
And that, that to me is almost a, more of the discussion about this, it was the amount. And you slanting, I paid two hundred and fifty dollars for my license. I think it's too cheap. And you're, I thought when we discussed, when I came to your office, we're kinda thinking about this idea in the beginning, that we don't wanna burden the staff. So, and then we just talked about this goes to general funds, so it doesn't go to a staffing thing. But I think that we should at least consider the amount to cover the labor involved and the time involved in the department. So if a hundred and fifty sounds like that wouldn't be enough to do that, I think this is worthy of more chatter about what the amount might be.
Mayor Proton Salvia?
Yeah, so I, I kind of have similar comments. You know, we've reviewed this master fee schedule at least twice at the budget subcommittee. Um, and really did a lot of due diligence around the rental. But I don't feel like we've done, and I'm really solid on that, I think it's a great idea, even though I have a rental property in town.
Yeah.
Um, but on the business, I really need to think this through a little bit. Like, I, I can see a little bit of both sides on this. So, um, if we, and mayor, I don't know how you feel about this. If you feel like ha- having the one, you feel like to be fair, we need to look at both of them. So you feel like it should be polled from the master fee or?
Yeah, I mean, I don't think there's, I don't think another meeting probably, Nick, would. We don't have to have this by the next meeting, I guess is what I'm saying.
No, you don't. It's just when do we wanna implement it, that's all, so. But if you wanna tie the bar of them together, then you'd have to wait to have that discussion, so.
Councilmember Jones?
I do have a couple of other questions on some of the fees. Do anyone else wanna talk about this other before I go? Okay, um, so I know that we had talked about in the cemetery committee, increasing the, thank you, increasing the, the amount for the plots, but it looks like it's already been, where did, how was that decided? That change to, yeah, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Oh, that's okay. So we, uh, we, we put in the single space monument fee going from two thousand dollars to three thousand dollars. And that would be effective, you know, at the January one. But that, those spaces aren't going to be available. Right now, they're, uh, they, the road still needs to be dug out. Uh, new markers need to be put in. New spaces should be available in the summer time period. So we're proposing that three thousand dollar amount. Um, and I don't believe that it would be, um, wrong if there is, if you would like to carve out the rental inspection fee, the, for commercial and for residential to a different meeting. And as we go, we've done that in the past too. We've taken it in chunks and said, well, we agree with this, this section of the master fee schedule. So that's something that I, I would like to throw out there as an option tonight too.
Well, I think that almost even this fee for the cemetery fee, because there was research being done and we were bringing Mr. Pixley in with some opinions on that. So I'm not sure how it landed at the three thousand. I just, I don't know if that, if that's something that we can not have in here or we vote on the three thousand?
I think we should. I, I assumed that it had been run through the cemetery committee, so it should be.
I mean, we certainly know we wanna increase it, there's no doubt. But we were thinking twenty-two, twenty-five hundred, we hadn't come up with anything yet. So that's okay.
Yeah.
I would, I think that would be great. Um, and there is so much in here. And because I don't sit on the committees and I don't, a couple of us don't, I, I would have liked to maybe get it earlier, um, than Friday. Just cause it, I looked at every line. I, I appreciated your summary for sure. But just being new, um, and it's a lot, I mean.
There is a lot in there.
Bless the people on that committee, like this is a huge amount of fees. Um, and a lot of them were just a five-dollar increase or whatever, but it's worthy of our time. So I, I mean, I, I would kind of feel like I wanna pass on voting on it tonight, but everybody wants to just pull some things out, that's fine. But it was just a lot to digest, so.
Sorry about that.
No, that's okay.
So maybe a suggestion is to table this for this meeting? And then also, do you, we, when, do you guys have a finance committee meeting in?
Wednesday. This week.
Maybe, so maybe talk about the business one as well.
I think that's great.
I think it's at what, four thirty?
Cause we have a little time.
It's six o'clock. Say it's six.
Oh, six, oh, okay.
Cause we have a little time on, yeah, on us from Wednesday.
Um, Zed?
Yeah.
Zed?
Yeah, sounds good to me.
Leanne has had not good with that or?
Can I ask one more if there's, if anybody sees other ones that we could start thinking about?
That's what I was thinking.
Cause then we're gonna come back at the next meeting, you're gonna say I didn't.
I do have a couple more.
Keep going, you know, that helps.
Sorry, cause we talked about the dog license change and I don't feel like that was done in here. Is that correct?
It wasn't, cause I wasn't able to present that afterwards.
Okay, so I think that, so again, another reason maybe to wait on that, cause we did have that lofty discussion about dog licenses and stuff, so. Um, and then, um, I just have a curious question. This is dumb maybe to use the time, but, um, there's a fifteen hundred dollar fee for a special planning commission meeting. Is, is that if a, a resident or a, a developer wants a special meeting? So you, you charge to pull together for not a scheduled meeting?
Right, if the, if the chairman agrees to have that meeting, then we pass the cost on cause we have to go through advertising and do all that good stuff. Very, it's very rare, but.
That was just a curious question. Um, and then, um, I think that might be it for now, so I think that was it, thanks. Okay.
Okay, so we will bring this up at the next meeting and, um, finance committee will, you know, take a look at that.
Were no other hot topics?
Any other hot topics in Macy's?
So one, maybe consider the charging to do the, the businesses and two, what, what fee? Maybe it's less than, maybe it's less time than the, so you need to charge, you know.
Yeah, my, my personal view, I think the, the rental fee is probably a little bit light based on what I've seen in other communities and stuff. And I'm not looking to gouge people, but I think based on the work that's involved and the inspections, even locally here, I've seen it a little bit higher. And East Point and Frazier and talking with the chief, I know his experience has been a little bit higher somewhere else.
I'll send you a website.
Yeah, and I'm not, listen.
It listed probably fifty local communities.
I'm not trying to make it exorbitant, but I just, that's just my own thought. But it's, a hundred and fifty is better than zero, so that's how I'm also.
Well, and honestly, doing all-house inspection is gonna have an impact on blight. And I mean, it's great news if we move forward with this, so.
Okay, very good, thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you, Marcy.
Thank you.
Um, next is to receive a report from the various boards of commission. First, a report from the planning commission.
Wait, wait a minute, wait a minute, we're gonna check register.
I'm sorry, check register if you have it.
I do have a quick question, sorry.
We have Anthony and Marcy here, go ahead.
There was a fee for the fireworks, I wanna say it was two thousand dollars. Um, and I know that Fox was going to, um, sponsor those. So did we just pay that bill and then they reimburse us?
Donations are separate.
Correct.
Okay, so donations come in and then?
And then the expenses though.
Goes, okay.
They don't, they don't pay it for, we'll see, you'll see.
Okay, they don't pay the company?
No.
They pay us cause of insurance and whatever. Okay, all right, that was it, thanks.
Mr. Fox said it publicly, he did?
On record.
Yeah, all right, so I'm good with that, approving it.
All right, next is, uh, report from the various boards of commission, planning commission, council member Howser.
Sure, good evening. Okay, so we had our planning commission meeting on November fourth, two thousand twenty-four. There were three issues, um, that we talked about. One was parking and loo for a new business on Main. Second one was patio and pergola, um, remodel at Paul's on Main Street. And then there was a canopy on the, um, front of the Ra-Ra Building over on, uh, on First Street, Lettich over there.
Second Street.
The, I'm sorry, South Street, I'm sorry, Second Street, five hundred East Second Street, okay. Um, the bigger issue that we talked about was the consideration at three thirty-nine East Street. This was site plan approval for a three-story mixed-use development. And one of the underlying themes that we have talked about at those past couple of meetings is parking and loo. And a rather substantive issue about the available parking that the city has as a whole um, and trying to balance that with current development, future development and kind of, um, where the city wants to go with that. So the city, um, at the request of the planning commission, provided the commissioners with some information, some data about the parking lot or the parking structure over there, Jeremy provided along with the police. But what we had also asked for, and what they were kind enough to provide us, is with a more comprehensive, um, analysis that takes into account weekends and evenings as well when the business, um, the restaurant would be open. So we are going to get that information from Jeremy and the police department. And then at the next meeting, I'm presuming, we will go through it and then, uh, make a determination whether or not that parking and loo is, is sustainable for the intended development based on all of the information that will be presented to us. And then finally, there was, um, a request by the zoning board, I believe, to modify the ordinance on the, um, uh, front face, the site entry garages. So there's a prohibition on that. Zoning has gotten some, um, requests for, uh, variances, et cetera, so some modifications. So they have asked, I believe, planning commission to take a look and see if that's something that we would reconsider and bring back into, uh, permissible use of the, uh, site entry garages. That was it.
Mayor Proton Salvia?
Thank you. So is there any, uh, timeline or plan regarding having planning commission look at our, our zoning implementation? I know this has been a topic. It feels like we keep pushing it down the line and I know we had some, I'll say, staffing issues, getting a full commission. Uh, how's that looking?
I'm happy to report that the commission is full now. Okay, so we have a chairman and, and he was present, ran an excellent meeting. And I believe it's just a function out of scheduling. And I would ask city managers.
Unfortunately, it's not, so.
Okay, it's not.
We have so many new folks here, so many new on planning commission. Anybody we talk to, they look at us like, what are you talking about? So, and our, our, um, consultants are even passing saying, we, you need to start over. There's four districts that weren't ever all the way through the council. So we're gonna basically have to go through all the districts again, get them to the planning commission, bring them back to this council to see how you want to implement them. The good news is the existing zoning ordinance is fl- there's nothing wrong with how we're doing it. I've said before, I, it's great that we wrote seventeen new divisions, but it works how it is now, so. And you need other eyes looking at to see, lots changed since, in those five years. Even the things that we thought were applicable and new zoning classifications, they're not even relevant anymore. Or they didn't have anything about marijuana dispensaries or things like that. So it's, the consult is like, it's too raw again. So you almost have to start over with this whole thing with your planning commission, so.
So, so what, what are the steps now?
So you'd have to go back and have, there's four that never made it through the process that, uh, if you remember, mayor, I know, Steve, you probably will too.
Four, four made it through but didn't get through city council. Kicked it back to planning commission.
Right.
And we were gonna, I thought, I thought we were making progress on that.
There, they just found two more that hadn't gone through, so, um, it's, it's still a process. It's, it's, you have to go, they have to get approved.
What is the process?
The process, yeah, planning commission has to make recognition city council for each district. So there's four that never got that far. They came up here and they got kicked back and then froze.
So what is planning commission gonna do next? Like what, what are the steps and then, then when does it come to us?
So they would have to get all the districts again, starting, we used to have second meetings of the month, can't seem to get that. So our planning commission, um, agenda's been so long that there's no time to do it. So they've gotta recommit to looking at all these districts again, so.
So I think, I think the planning commission needs to.
I would say probably in January after the holidays, we should commit ourselves to doing two meetings a month.
I agree, that's, that's really neat.
Candidly, the only way that we're going to make any forward progress on this. Cause I will say, um, regular meetings are long and it's not because of any one particular reason other than there's a lot of things going on. So the regular meetings are just simply not conducive to talking about master plan. You have to have a dedicated second meeting. You have to have a dedicated second meeting, that third Thursday, or whatever that time is, and then do it that way in January, February, March are probably ideal, because it's, you know, maybe things aren't as active as they are in the summer, but.
It's frustrating that we, it's, we can't seem to get this across the finish line, and they keep, the goalposts keep moving, but.
Haven't talked about it in a while.
Right.
To your point.
But I will also say, there are some new members on Planning Commission, so getting them to get ramped up is a little bit of a process as well. So it probably makes sense to have another one of those meetings that we had, like a tutorial, to have all the members come in, even City Council. I would, remember we did that joint session?
So that's my suggestion to our consultants. Instead of pitting these two groups against each other one more time, we all meet, agree, we are doing these districts, just go through the words. It's just words you have to move around. Rewrite, I can rewrite the zoning ordinance, literally. With this attorney, we can rewrite. We don't have to pay $80,000 to a consultant to take and put it into words. You have to get the commitment to the districts, and we can't seem to get there. Everybody, the River Trail, we almost had it, and then the council person, nope, kicked it back, and we couldn't get it through. So we have to get through them.
It was before you.
Yeah.
That was, that was when I was new. That's how old this town is. That was 2017, people.
Wow.
You're right.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Well, I think it'd be a great idea to streamline it, since a lot of, so many of us are aware of parts of this, and just get us all together. At this time, I don't see there's a lot controversial. It just needs to be done, and.
There was a lot of dancing around things that shouldn't have been danced, right? Just cut and dry. We didn't change it that much, just put them into words.
Didn't think you did.
Codify it, get it to the bodies, and get it approved. If we're going to do it, let's just do it.
Yeah, I agree.
It just is, it looks less, I'd say, yeah. Something that you just need to dot those T, just do it, because it kind of leaves this sort of question out there constantly, and it doesn't look good for the city.
So Nick, maybe at the next Planning Commission meeting, I will bring it up as a recommendation or suggestion to say, hey, listen, we talked about this at City Council, it's a city council liaison. Why don't we schedule a date for everyone to come in and sit down and do this? And, you know, again, it's probably too, not enough time to do it in December with everything.
January is perfect. We get a joint meeting, and then we just plot the way forward. Absolutely.
Okay.
We're going right into goals and objectives.
Okay.
All right, next is, next is a report from the Principal Shopping District, Councilmember Jones.
Okay, so there's so much going on. I'm going to reel through some of it. The cookie stroll, they opened to buy the tins on Friday, and I guess it's like a Taylor Swift concert. They were sold out in five minutes or something. So the cookie stroll actually happens on December 7, and quite exciting. The downtown, the window display contest is from 11:25 to 12:04. Lon Yap is on 11:25. Kris Kringle is 12:06 and 12:07. The major fundraiser, funding person is Chief Financial, with the DDA putting in $10,000 and the PSD putting in $5,000. Let's see, you know, for, oh, Frozen in Time is 117 and 118. Lions Club doing the marshmallows, all the good stuff. They have a bingo card, to go through that. Festival of the Trees is 11:23 and 11:24. They're going to have their holiday gift certificate promotion, as they've done in the past. So tons of stuff going on. You can go to their website to get all of the details. And then one of the things they would talked about that will come before us and be talked more, talked about more, is combining the DDA and the PSD together to do a merger of those two committees. And it has to do with some financial reasons in the Gram, and that will be coming to us in the future.
Very good. Thank you.
I will let Christie give more details on that.
Next is a report from the OPC Commission, Mayor Protem Salvia.
Yes, so the OPC met on November 7. Regular business such as the 2025 building closure schedule, the 2025 meeting schedule. The bulk of the meeting was spent talking about the implementation of the strategic plan. It's now described as a, kind of a one-year rolling strategic plan. What I like about this new process is every board member is assigned to a subcommittee, so every board member has a separate group that they're working with, you know, as an example, on reviewing programs and services, communications. I'm involved with the, where's my category? The financials, shocking, right? So having discussion around, does there, now that the capital program is, is getting done with the new millage for the OPC, you know, what else needs to happen in terms of endowment or future development for things like the calf barn? So really good discussion, and the OPC. Oh, one thing for council, there will be a, a walk-through, a tour of the transportation hub. So if council would like to attend, let me know. It's not generally open to the public, because it's not a place the public goes. But there's a lot of activity there, and that's where our tax dollars from the transportation millage are flowing through there and getting transportation. So again, let me know if you guys can make that.
I think I already signed up.
Good.
Okay, is there any other public comment? Brian? No?
There is a phone call ending with 651. Who has their hand up?
Okay. Phone number 651?
Hello?
Welcome, hello?
It's Jane from Parkdale.
How are you tonight?
I'm wondering, where's Alex?
Alex is not here tonight.
No, is he still with the city?
That's confidential information.
Okay. Who's in charge of the BTW?
The city manager.
Currently?
The city manager right now is temporarily in charge.
Okay.
Is that okay?
That's my question.
Okay, thank you.
Bye.
Bye. Onto General Miscellaneous, Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, two things. First, thanks to Chief Seesley today, and Mayor, for stopping by. We had a, a little ceremony to honor all the armed services branches. We recognized each branch and had somebody that was on our staff, or one gentleman, one of our firemen's dad, I think was in the Navy, and we went and planned, put the flags there and took some photos, and just out of respect for Veterans Day. Never been a big thing in this town, for some reason. Other communities have big events, we don't, but Chief C. and I talked about it, and we wanted to do something today. So it was nice. It was intimate, and I know the people that were recognized, appreciated. That's, that's, that's a good thing. And then tonight, literally kicked off the holiday season, so Christie just texted me, and the Business Expo went on tonight. They had 6,000 look-ats the night, just during, leading up to it, and they were panicking, like, this usually has, like, 300 people show up. So it ended up over 1,000 people showed up. So it was the biggest one ever. And she just texted and said, I don't understand why people love it so much, but they had a great time. It's for the service industry. So part of the PSD discussion that we had at the meeting, Councilwoman, was when we were looking at changing the district boundaries back, it was the service industries that kind of fought to say, do I really get anything out of this? So they, the Business Expo helped fill in that gap. So most of those are the ones there, it's not the retailers, it's the service industries. They get a chance to reach out to new customers. A thousand people showed up tonight. So I think we're in for a good holiday season, it looks like, so we're off, off and running. So other than that, again, I think I, my two son-in-laws were, served our country, and first thing in the morning, we make sure I let them know that I remember every time. So my, just like my dad. So thank you for all the vets that have served us and gave their lives in the, in service this country, so that we can have days like today that we're free. So that's it.
Thank you, Nick, for that. Madam Clerk?
Just a thank you to everybody who helped the, with the election, especially Brian.
Thank you.
Good, great.
Mr. City Attorney?
Nothing, thank you.
Mayor Protem Salvia?
Yes, thank you, two things. One, the Parks Millage pass, so I know we have in the past talked about, hey, if the Parks Millage pass, maybe we can get some money from Oakland County for the trail. So I'm sure we're asking for that.
Already did, already on the queue.
Wonderful, thank you. And then, yes, just want to comment on Veterans Day. Thank you very much, Chief and City Manager, for doing the Veterans Day event. Unfortunately, I had already committed to a meeting at that time, so maybe if in the future, you could just let us know, like, hey, every Veterans Day at 1 o'clock, we're going to do something, so that we can just have it on our calendars. And I was at the Detroit Veterans Day Parade, and this was, I'm just going to read the, the closing comments of a poem that was written. Many, many of you have maybe heard this. It's called, "It Has Always Been the Soldier." This is by Father Dennis O'Brien. "It is the soldier who salutes the flag, who serves beneath the flag, whose coffin is draped by the flag, and allows the protester to burn the flag." So thank you to all of our veterans and their families, and just remembering all of them today.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I, just trigger yourself for me, as always. So again, shout out to Chief John. We were in a staff meeting, and we started talking about the 96-inch sewer on Dequender. He's like, that's a lot of dirt. Don't we need a lot of dirt to fill in the trail? So we got, Asil, we called her from the meeting, jumped on it, got to G2, investigated the clay that's coming out of that ground, and guess what? We get all of it. It's being stored right now at, at our yard for free. The contractor said, you're saving me the shipping costs. He's shipping it to our yard. We're going to be able to back it down the trail, and you, it'll fill up half of what we need for blue clay, free. Our cost of trucking it down a quarter mile, so. Thinking out of the box, and it's, and they were happy because it saved them a lot of trips to this community with a lot of clay, and we, and we get to reuse it. So I think that's, shout out for that one, so. Sorry about that.
Very good, thank you. Councilmember Sage?
Nothing, the savings are.
Councilmember Jones?
Believe it or not, there's nothing.
Councilmember Trent?
Yeah, I would just like to pile on about the Holiday Expo. I was there, and I couldn't get in to park. I did have somebody take me and drop me off, and then I had him pick me up to be here. But there were more people. I'd been there for three or four years. And it was, it was amazing. It did look like there was, it did look like it'd go up to 1,000. So yeah, good job. It's a chamber, it's a Rochester Regional Chamber, and a partnership with the DDA. So there you go, maybe, you know, they both advertise, yeah, and they both have their, you know, members and downtown merchants there.
Thank you. Councilmember Hauser?
Very briefly, I just want to add on to what you had said, Mr. Mayor, about the election. I had the opportunity to work at the Community House again this year during the election from start to finish, and I have to tell everyone in the city who's watching and listening that the city administration, Leanne and Brian, and Jeremy and Holly, and everyone, and Anthony who works in county's ballots, I don't, I wish everyone could understand the volume of work that goes into making sure this election ran as smoothly as it did, because it ran that way because of all the work that Leanne and her staff did in advance. We had nine, 10 days of early voting, all the absentee ballots, and we had 500-some people vote in Precinct 1, and we heard the mayor, 87% turner, or voter turnout, which is unbelievable. I thought we had a lot last year with those marijuana proposals. This was shot over the moon. So again, anyone who's ever interested in working in an election, anyone who's ever interested in coming in and helping out and volunteering and checking IDs and turning the ballots in, reach out to the city clerk. It's an absolute, it's a long day, but it is incredibly rewarding, and it's a wonderful way to, to give back to the community during election time. So Leanne, thank you so much for all the work, and please tell your staff the same thing, okay?
Mr. Mayor, she won't tell this story, but I, I love it because I experienced it. So we're sitting there, and there's a woman that's been coming to the counter, in her face, quite a bit about wanting to be an observer. I've always heard her, as busy as she was, like, just, I'll make accommodations, you let me know. So sure enough, I was standing, I happened to go out to the counter, lady was standing there. I said, I bet you that's her. So Leanne went out, got her, came in, here's a bottle of water. We have special seats for you to sit. You can sit here all day.